I'd like to call together the Town Council work session. The date is January 9th, and it is 6:35. And if we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose stand is one nation founded by the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the second night of our capital improvement program work session. And tonight, we're going to be looking at the long-term financial program, open space, parks and recreation programs, senior service programs, and long-term financial programs, which is the fear share development fees, affordable housing exceptions, in lieu fees for affordable housing. And then we will see if the Town Council has any other matters of interest. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Alfred. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start on page thirty-four of the document, the long-term program project descriptions. The first project, what we'll go through tonight are all of the programs related to recreation, leisure services, and senior programming. So the first item is shown on page thirty-five, and this is the open space acquisition program. Over the last twelve years, there's been twenty-six open space projects that have been, the town has been involved with. During that period of time, fifteen-hundred-and-five acres of land have been preserved from development through coordination and leverage of municipal dollars, private sector dollars. During that term, we've spent seven-point-six million dollars toward those fifteen-hundred-and-five acres. We worked through a community partnership group. The community partnership involves the two land trusts in towns, the South Kingston and Narrow River. It also includes the Champlin Foundation, the Nature Conservancy, State DEM, and Federal Fish and Wildlife. Periodic meetings, some when projects, a lot of projects are under consideration as often as monthly or quarterly, when there's little activity or little funds available, that group continues to meet to look at available projects that could be considered for additional acquisition or at least preservation with conservation rights. Most recent purchase that the town was involved with was last summer, actually, two thousand and eleven, with the fourteen-acre Browning Farm off of Route One and Jerry Brown Farm Road. We put out fifty thousand dollars toward the development rights, as well as another nineteen-thousand five hundred dollars that went toward ancillary costs incurred by the land trust in the procurement of the purchase and sale agreement. Total preserved land in the community at this point is eleven thousand two hundred and fourteen acres, which equates to about thirty-point-eight percent of the land area within the town itself. So we have exceeded the goal of the thirty percent of land for preservation purposes. The program in the chart that's on the board, as well as the chart that's on page thirty-five, looks at both the revenue and the expenditures that are anticipated over the next six years. You can see with the revenue statement, we're anticipating continued support through the real estate conveyance tax proceeds. Real estate conveyance tax provides a dollar seventy cents per thousand of value of land purchases within the community. That money stays within the open space acquisition program and as a revenue. The second funding source that's used in open space acquisition is bonds for open space At this point, the town has two-point-three million dollars in additional authorization that could be put into the market where there are major projects that the Town Council directed additional acquisitions in excess of what the budget document or planning document shows at four-hundred thousand dollars over the next six-year period. If we move along to the next slide, the next slide shows the real estate conveyance tax incomes. And as you can see, when we go back to the two thousand and five, two thousand and six year, with the amount of real estate transactions occurring in the town, we were generating in excess of four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars in income that stayed resident to the open space program. That has been reduced, obviously, during the recessionary conditions that have occurred and the downsizing in values. During the eleven-twelve year, the last completed year, we took in two-hundred-and-two thousand. During the time that we took in that two-hundred-and-two thousand, we were also paying out approximately two-hundred, three-hundred thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand of which comes into the general fund on a yearly basis to pay down debt service associated with open space purchases. And we were looking at the potential for spending four-hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at about three-hundred thousand dollars that we need each year not to see the fund balance within that program go down. So at this point, for the first six months of the fiscal year, we've seen collections of a hundred-and-forty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, I believe. So we're well on track as far as that program revenue is concerned, and hopefully, we'll make the two-fifty number that is within the planned document. Page thirty-eight shows protected properties within the community as of December of two thousand and twelve. The color code, that's you can see on the board, and certainly not going to see in the black and white, that we've made a copy of, documents all of the lands on how you come up with the thirty-point-eight percent. One parcel that I would point out is the Noyds Farm. And Noyds Farm, you can see right below where it says North Kingston, just a little bit to the, a little bit to the left. This is the Noyds Farm acquisition which occurred in the two thousand and sixth year. That parcel is a two-hundred-and-forty-eight acre parcel. It was one of the largest remaining undeveloped parcels within the community. The acquisition price was three million dollars. It's a historical, it's a historic farmstead, and it possesses stone walls, forests, forested areas, streams, wetland, and a great deal of wildlife. The town in the acquisition process for Noyds Farm agreed to conservation easements, which requires the property to remain in open space, natural scenic agricultural uses only. It also provides opportunity for us to develop passive recreation. One of the components of this budget, and we'll talk about in a couple of minutes, is the use of ten-thousand, twenty thousand dollars within the planning reserve fund to hire a consultant to work with the conservation, planning, and recreation commissions on a first-line master plan development for passive use of that large piece of property. We're not looking to develop this for active play-space purpose. This would only be as a means of providing a resource as passive recreation with walking paths or trails, the availability of potentially people being able to fish in some of the streams that are located there, and some type of a trailhead that would provide parking accessibility to the site. Access to the property is from Route One Thirty-Eight, and a proper access would need to be created. At this point, there's a small driveway, but it's inadequate for any type of public use, and that would be one of the things that we'd look to have accomplished with a full planning commission. I'd also suggest at the time that that is set up, that we possibly invite members of the family, Myers family, that were involved in the sale of that property so generously provide us with some discounting on value to participate in that planning process. As we move along, the next project that we're talking about is the bike path connection on Broad Rock, Broad Rock Road, which would be from the playfields to the South County Commons. And the, in fact, Jim, if you flip that one over, on the other side, we've got that.
I wanted to point out a couple of things here, is that when we took the tour the other day, the tour, right, is for orientation purposes, this is the Broad Rock School. And maybe easier for Andy to point out them as I'm pointing here. Broad Rock School is here, the senior center is here, Omong Field is here. The road that goes in to the playfields, where we have the two ball fields, three ball fields and the North Park, a straight line will take us into the Commons. That straight line will take us right where the gym program is located, right here is where the hotel is, so this is the building which houses the gym on the basement floor. There's a seat grade separation here on the higher property. The other concern is that we have, we have concerns that we cannot spend public dollars on the higher property. So what we're attempting to do is to look at paving from this point forward to the town line where this property stops, so about seventeen-hundred-and-sixty feet, that'll be a walk-in, walk-out. But when you get here, it still would be a path, as a right-of-pass and repass to the town, of our public, that would be able to continue on an undefeated surface. Right now, it's a brown roadway. This is really, it was opened up last when the common was constructed, because this is also where the school line is located. So when there was a cutback on the, on the cross on both sides of that, right away, and the construction took place several years ago, certainly, we're not going to sense that. We've had the recreation department had to go in and cut back all of our property, so that right now, even without the paving, this is a proper, personal, efficient way. And it also provides an opportunity for somebody who wants to, at the senior center, be able to stroll the kind of long distance, but then to be able to use that. It will provide us with direct access to the Broad Rock School, and it will provide direct access to Omong Field. Because right now, there is a right path that goes along the property line that we have here to Omong Field, that is down toward the campus. So it was all tie-in, but what it sort of requires is the property owner within the Commons to be able to devote resources to be able to complete the pathway.
We have waited several years, hoping that we could come up with a collaborative effort to be able to put it in. We're having a great deal more people on the municipal side walking that path at this point. So we think that it is time for us to bifurcate the project and go forward with a paving element at the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. That would be paid for through recreation impact fees that we hold in reserve at this time. The remaining sixteen-hundred feet to get to the parking, to the parking area behind the gym space is something that would still need to be addressed through the Commons or tenants within the Commons who see this as a resource and to provide their businesses with better opportunities. Certainly, it provides, if it's developed, opportunities for bike path use for people coming to the hotel. It provides opportunity for those using the gymnasium or the people that work within that facilities, those facilities, to be able to have a rural agricultural area to be able to walk through. And it also provides people with direct travel if they want to get down to the center of Wakefield without going on any public roads. So I think whether it's done today or whether it's done five years, it will be done. It just depends on how do we act as a catalyst to get it done. I think the first step would be, is to develop our portion of it. If we build it, they will come. So our objective would be to incorporate that into our schedule over the next couple of years. Hopefully, what we can do at the same time, once we have commitment from the council to move forward with it, is to, again, deal with the property owners to see whether or not they can make any type of commitments as far as advancement on the private property itself. Yes, Jim?
Yeah, what's the legal language? Is that a right-of-way? Is it a road on the Commons property? Is there any way we could get some grants from the state or feds for?
No, we don't see where we do. The only thing the town has is that when we purchased the farm area, the farm has the right-of-pass and repass to Route One. So we don't have any, there's no property ownerships, it's just a right-of-pass and Originally, when the planning department looked at this, there was a potential for them trying to tie into this area here. But once we looked at that, it made little sense, because the road's too narrow within the area, and plus the path that ends up coming between two buildings which are already very close. So the only way to really break it in would be to break it in through the lower area here. And we think it's possible. I've talked with the property owner many times. I think that certainly the recession has put a chilling effect on his ability to move forward with it at this point, but it certainly seems to be a project that both he and several of the tenants in that area are in favor of. But I'm not sure that we will ever see the opportunity to use public sector money on that unless there was some type of land dedication involved, which I don't think is feasible.
Steve, I just have a question. That land, you know, on both sides of that bike path, what is that zoned?
The property where the common is it, that's a special management district. So the, that has all of its own uses within the district, that allows for the multi-use for residential and commercial activities. But anything that's on the town property is obviously is zoned, is zoned for GI, for General Government, institutionally.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no questions on that, we'll move on. The Neighborhood Guild, our one-hundred-and-three-year-old building continues to need good-loving care. The last bond issue that was issued was in, I believe, nineteen ninety-five, where at that point, we spent a million dollars as far as upgrades are concerned. We're looking at authorization of an additional million dollars to go in place in the, probably May of two thousand and fifteen. All of the debt service that would be associated with this indebtedness would be paid for through the guild's trust funds. To give you an idea, the investment income from the guild's guild trust fund now pays for the operational expenses of about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars a year. In addition, it pays for the debt service associated with that nineteen ninety-five bond, and it also pays for a minimal number, I think about seven thousand dollars, in capital improvements. Right now, the market value associated with the trust held in, funds held in trust are about twelve-point-six-five million dollars. So the earnings on that on a yearly basis are handled through the finance director working in conjunction with the trustees of the school funds. In addition to that twelve-point-six-five million, there's also reinvested income, which is a second account held exclusively for the guild, of about five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars as of last June thirtieth. So there is adequate funds for us to be able to move forward. My objective was to hold off on this bond issue until we saw the last year in payment on the prior bond, which will be completed, the final payments will be in the fifteen, sixteen year, which would be the first year we'd be looking at debt service on sixteen, seventeen. But we could structure that, so we may go in sixteen, seventeen without a principal payment and interest only, depending on when we would sell. On this project, I expect that we will, in the fourteen, fifteen year, hire architect and engineering services to prioritize with Terry and the Rec Commission which of the improvements need to be done and to come up with real numbers. At this point, these are all placeholders. Again, as we've said before, this is a planning document, more than a specific financial document. These are placeholders at this point, yet they represent the issues that the Recreation Commission and staff believe are the most important issues to be addressed with that next million dollars in expenses. If there's no questions on that one, we'll move forward with the Community Recreation Center. And with the Community Recreation Center, behind Jim is a board, and it's also, you've got the picture there, and it's what I've got on the board here.
For orientation, this is the senior center here. This is the outside area of the place that is called Broad Rock School. This is the road we were talking about and the bike path location going up to the Commons. So it's really the same map that you looked at two minutes ago. We acquired thirteen-point-three acres of land several years ago, which was the last purchase on the farm property that was owned by the Bishop, which was the original Gaminow Farm. And Gaminow Farm originally went from Broad Rock all the way up to Route One. It was split up years ago, and a portion of it was donated to the diocese of Providence. Actually, the town acquired all of this property for, in different installments. But the most recent was this one last piece of this thirteen-foot acre of land that's outlined in the yellow, which was, in on negotiations with the diocese, the diocese wanted an agreement that they would be able to use fields based on field hockey. And we said, well, we'll give you exclusive rights to be able to use that during your inter-solastic season, provided you build the field. We'll give you the hockey if you build the field. The agreement was that it would have to be done within a five-year period, and the five years is expired. They asked us last year for an extension, and we certainly were willing to grant the extension because we weren't putting the parking lot in. So at this point, what we have is really what a master plan would look like for the property. The first facility would be this twenty-five thousand square foot area. And we're not suggesting you're going to build it, but what we're indicating is, on a build-out basis, would you have the ability to now doubling the size of that facility? You would. Is it a case that ten years from now, instead of the basketball courts or indoor soccer availability, someone wanted a sheet of ice, or they wanted to double the capacity of the building? The main thing we want to provide the community with is the flexibility to be able to decide what future improvements they make, and what they want to make, and if they've got adequate land to be able to do that. So what we're doing with all of this patio property is making that available as really a community resource where for efficiency purposes, everything will be located on spot. You've got direct access to Broad Rock School, Broad Rock School's got direct access all the way to Omong Field, you've got direct access to the YUCA, the North Park, the space, the fields, as well as the scene. That provides us with a great deal more flexibility for the public that's using that area.
The only concern that it brings is the traffic issues as to what impact that has on Broad Rock Road. That is one of the things that we will have to look at and that future councils will have to be concerned with if the facility is constructed or if additional facilities are constructed at a later time. Our objective at this point is to provide future councils with the flexibility. One of the most frustrating things is for towns not to have the land available to be able to meet what the new needs are. Our objective has been, particularly over the past ten years, is to make sure that the land is available, because once it goes into development for private purposes, it'll never be available for municipal operations at a later time. That's why we, as we talked about the other night, last night, we've got money available to buy additional space if we thought it was necessary for active activities or municipal service levels. At this point, we're not looking at doing that. But what we're looking at with the Community Recreation Center is probably a cost that's going to be higher than the two-point, the four-point-two million dollars that we're showing in the planning document at this point, because these numbers really haven't been aged over the past three years. I'm not sure what that cost would be, but as, once the council decides that it's going to become a shovel-ready program, what we'll have to do at that point is to do architectural and engineering design for the facility and a cost workup. At that point, we'll determine where funding sources are available, whether additional bonding is necessary, whether additional resources from the impact fees that are collected for recreation purposes, or whether or not there's additional school funding that should be made available. One of the things we would like to explore is whether or not we could get any type of reimbursement from the state under the education use that may occur within the building. That seems unlikely based on the changes that the state has made. It seems now that any type of school facility has to be a hundred percent school, but it's something that we would continue to pursue. So we've used this as a placeholder. The one thing I've cautioned councils in the past on is that I don't see the construction of the building as a problem. I don't see the financing of the building as a problem. What I do see as a problem is how we operate the facility. If you put a twenty-five thousand square foot building in, and if it has activity space and it also has shower rooms that would be necessary for, if we're using it for inter-solastic purposes, and if we had equipment in there, would we be in direct competition with the private sector, with businesses that are located in our community and taking business away from them? Would we be looking to charge fees for the use of the facility? If we were, would our lower-income families have less availability of use? When I say this, what I'm saying to you is that if you look at the operational costs associated with this type of a facility, it probably will be in the hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred thousand dollar a year range. If that amount is going to come principally through the operating budget in recreation, it's going to have profound impact on what your tax needs are, because it'll be property taxes, the final source of revenue that would end up paying for the service. One of the reasons we've delayed shovel-ready conditions for this project is the fact that we've been concerned on not building it, but how we would operate it, and what impact it would have on other services within the community. So at this point, it's still a design concept. It hasn't moved beyond that stage. When we first started talking about this, the bonds were approved on this in two thousand and four. So we're now looking at, eight years ago, that the public said, we'll give you two-point-five million dollars in bonds to build the building. We've updated some of the costing on it, but we will be at least ten to twelve years out on this being a concept project that has never seen its day because of the concerns associated with the operations of the facility. I do think that revenue can be generated by use or lease out of space within I do think that revenue can be generated by use or lease out of space within that facility, but I also think that it's going to be very limited if it's not going to come into direct competition with our local businesses. And it's got to be limited if it's not going to prevent lower-income individuals from having full beneficial use of a community resource. So, those are concerns that I have. I still think this is a very worthwhile project and something that the community needs. When you look at your comprehensive community plan and you see the new standards that have been suggested in terms of population as to the need for field spaces, or the population that's needed for indoor recreation, we'll see that this is an activity or a play space area that we do have deficiencies with. We see it on a daily basis with the sport teams that have an inability to have more than one practice. We're concerned that practice times not go too late at night when the kids are in school. Our gyms at all of our high school and elementary school at Peastdale, as well as the two gyms at the middle schools, are full from eight o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night. So, could we use another space? Could we provide the high school with a better venue for the indoor sports that occur in the gymnasium there now? Yes, we could. But at what expense? And what type of cost sharing could be done with the school department? And again, school department, since they're already relying on, you know, seventy-eight cents of the dollar here, if we say, well, we're going to have them pay for a cost of the operations, it's still coming out of the taxpayer. So, it's a project that, if we were to find the ability to build this using grant money from some source, which I don't think is all that likely, and we were minimizing what our debt service cost would be, it would then free up some of the dollars for the operations. If we could find philanthropic dollars, it would help, but I'm just, I'm not sure that that's the case. What we may need to see is the community to come forward and do fundraising to be able to assist in this type of a program. Because it's got to be bigger than just the town building. There's got to be a support for the activities. I do think that by the time you're done with this, we may have to look at, you know, increasing the price to probably in the area of five and a half million. But at this point, we haven't changed those numbers because we really don't have, we don't have anything other than a shell listed as a building. What goes into the building, you know, some of the community recreation centers are not just floor space. They may be exercise rooms. They may have the shower facilities. They may have a number of different types of rooms available that are for different types of activities, dance programs, if you will. All of those different things would have to be considered as to what it would cost to build and then what it would cost to operate. Personnel costs would be high, because you've got custodial activities that would be required, and if the facility was open twelve hours a day, you'd need supervision twelve hours of the day. So, when you start looking at that and the level of personnel that would be necessary, plus the building's operation costs for heat, light, and electric, we see that there's a major new operational cost. Now, the last major program that we started from scratch was our seniors program and our EMS programs. And both of those were very difficult, but they were done at a time when there was a good, strong economy, low unemployment, and high property values. We don't have those components in place today.
Steve, can I just ask a question, please? I'm glad that you've addressed the concern about the impact on other facilities that has been brought to my attention. So, when that does come to be shovel-ready, there will be a plan on possible impact for some of the fitness centers in town? Is that the projected plan?
Well, I think that what I would say to you is, a lot of it depends on what you put into the building. You can put a basic building in, which is gym space, period. You'll still have major operating costs associated with it without a lot of activities during the daytime, unless you've got some type of programming that's there. How it would integrate with existing activities in town is what we would have to look at. You know, it's, the Neighborhood Guild program has been a really interesting program over the last fifty years, in that when the guilds started offering a lot of the programs, they were seed programs. The first yoga classes, I think, in town were offered at the guild. The programs expanded where, then they went into the private sector, but, you know, the weight room at the guild, that also was a seed program. A lot of times, they started the programs first, and we saw expansions into the private sector. Here, I think you'd have a different situation where you've got the programs already in town. If you were replicating those, it would be at the private sector's expense, which is something that certainly no one's going to advocate for.
And was there talk of any indoor ice rink, or was that the second building?
The real need right now is the gym space, whether it's for soccer, indoor soccer, whether it's for volleyball, whether it's for basketball. The ice is not an issue at this point in the community. There's certainly people in the community that would disagree and say, we need more sheets of ice. I'm not sure how well URI is doing as far as that is concerned, but that's not something that we had seen in any needs assessment, and the cost of operating ice is far more expensive than a gym floor.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question, if you don't mind. I was listening to you say that the parcel that was cut off that was designated by the Diocese to include field hockey for interscholastic purposes, the other buildings, will they strictly be for recreational use, or would there be any interscholastic sports events that would be held on those existing, those buildings that are proposed?
No, we would propose to use it for interscholastic sports. In fact, when you look at the bond issues that were approved, one of the bonds that was approved in two thousand and four for nine hundred thousand dollars was a school-related bond. So the school committee was supportive of us building a community recreation center as a means of allowing the interscholastic sports to have a new home.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, just one more thing. Have you looked at other communities who have, like, similar projects, and what have they done with the, you know, with the public, you know, I mean, rather like, private businesses? And I know it's no, personally, my brother-in-law runs a program like this down in Connecticut. It's a community, it's East Lime. They have, they don't have a hockey ring, but they have a pool. It's pool, and then gymnasiums, and all those kind of things. And it's used by the community from five o'clock in the morning till, like, midnight. It's used by the high schools, it's used by everyone, and I'm just wondering if it's, if there are any other places in Rhode Island have something similar to this.
Andy, why don't you address it? You've been closer to looking at the operations on this project.
Yeah, over the years, we've looked at pretty much all the facilities in Rhode Island. A lot of the private schools, facilities like, well, actually, even public, Portsmouth, Route Twenty-four, you look off to the right, you see a large facility. It's less than ten years old. A number of the other private schools throughout the state, throughout New England, we've looked at. And I think the models are all different based on what exists in the community at the time of construction. The Portsmouth model is built with the high school, so it's integrated directly into the school system, although it is widely used by the community. As the manager was mentioning, I think in this community, at this particular time, you have such a dominant presence of the YMCA and other various private facilities in terms of fitness programming and fitness facilities, in terms of weight rooms, cardio rooms, and so forth, that are located throughout the community. We're deficient in really open, large, general, multipurpose space for whether it's indoor soccer, indoor basketball, walking tracks, things of that nature, multipurpose rooms. I think originally, too, when the project was being designed, we looked at slowly changing the use of the guild to more of an educational program, arts, other educational components, and taking all of the physical activities out. We're moving the small fitness center and moving some of the broader, more physical activities into the athletic center, and also sharing some of the personnel. You have a recreation division that is based out of the guild. So we were looking at all of those various types of models to somehow finesse the funding of the operating expenses of managing a facility like this. Actually, another thing that, when it originally came up, was looking at indoor tennis during the day, multipurpose court surfaces that could be used for volleyball, indoor tennis, indoor soccer, basketball courts. You know, an interesting facility is a very old facility, and that's in West Warwick. When you look at that indoor building, they have the ice rink next door, they have a main building that has three gyms, gym floor spaces inside that one old building, but the center court is actually an interscholastic court. It's set long ways where you have two other full-size courts, so it's used basically virtually twenty-four seven, but also integrated into the school system. That's a very similar model to what we're showing here on the plan, where you have parking, you have a football facility behind it, you have ice rink, you have just about everything in one particular area. So, yeah, I think as the project evolves and as the years go by, we're going to have to go back in and do some more research before we're able to put together a plan. And that, again, might be a number of years from now, but it'll at least give us some additional time to evaluate what other private services are being offered in the town.
Excuse me, are they charging fees in West Warwick?
They do, you know, each community is different. I think some of the points that were made, that a model where, we're talking about interscholastic sports, we're also talking about youth leagues. You know, so there's the ability to generate funds to support the operation that may not have to come directly from local families, but it could come through residents' participation in those programs that ultimately pay a fee that's negotiated with those programs and established by the town to support the building. So, I think there are a number of different ways you can look at it. At this particular time, is there a need for a large-scale fitness center? We'd probably say not, based on the number that exists in the community with the gym spaces that are located pretty much all over town, in fitness rooms, actual weight rooms, and cardio rooms, and aerobics classes, and yoga programs, and so forth. So it's a program that changes every year. I know the Recreation Department and Commission, with Terry's direction, goes back and takes another look at it each and every year. And I think the plan and the needs of the community continue to change. I think they'll continue to do that as we move forward.
Now, Andy, the Thayer Arena in Warwick, that's owned by the city, right? And they charge fees?
They do.
So, it does work.
Yeah, it does, and I think there would be a fee associated with any use, but I think it's depending upon the type of fee structure and the types of programs that you're going to offer, and providing access. So, open gym space would be something that could easily be subsidized by the town, but the fees associated with large youth interscholastic use would probably fund the majority of the operation. And a facility like that, that has open, large gym space, would require less staff support. You know, if you have multipurpose fitness rooms, if you have cardio rooms, you have those types of facilities, your staff, your reliance on personnel is going to be much, much greater than it would on a facility that has just multiple courts that are easily overseen by a limited staff.
How about the money that interscholastic makes from the fees for admission, you know, for the fans?
Typically, that's managed through the school program itself. So, yeah, the athletic department generally manages those fees.
So that wouldn't be considered fees that can be used for the gym?
Well, I'm sure a partnership could be established if, in fact, the school system was going to be using that for, whether it's indoor girls' basketball, boys' basketball, indoor volleyball. You know, you'd really have to take a look at, and we haven't done that in a number of years, because the program, again, started back in the early two thousand, so a lot has changed since then. We'd have to sit back down with the school department and the athletic program and see exactly what their needs are, and probably looking at their design of the facility, and really seeing where the collaboration would be most efficient for both the school and the town.
Make no mistake about it, there's got to be fee revenue coming in to offset some of the operational costs. Our only concern is that, depending on what you put in there, is going to really drive what the cost of operation is going to be. And to a great degree, it may be that you start out where you have a basic program and let the program grow based on demands that come to you once you provide the generic space. But at least the generic space can be used right away. Jim?
The YMCA, they're tax-exempt, are they not?
Yes, they're tax-exempt on the state statute across the entire state.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Next project is the Marina Park improvements. Marina Park improvements, Marina Park is, say, thirteen point three acres. It is a park which really, I think, is a diamond in the rough. It's a park, however, that needs some immediate work. One of the things that it needs at this point is, the public dock needs a couple additional floats added to it to provide for the ability to have more than one boat tied up as people are putting into the water or taking out. We need to really reconstruct the parking lot, the west parking lot itself. The west parking lot is right in front of where the restaurant is located. Just to give you an idea and understand, the town's ownership at Marina Park has leases for three marinas, a yacht club, URI sailing club. It generates about two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars in income to the town on an annual basis, which is a revenue to our general fund. A portion of those dollars can be used to be able to improve that, but obviously at the expense of the revenue coming into the general fund. What we're looking at here is really a very basic program. Last year, we looked at a much more expansive program, which was going to have federal dollars involved with it. However, the size of the program was going to be well over a million dollars, require us expanding the put-in areas so that two boats could be let at the same time on the ramps. It just became too large and was going to require too many local dollars on a match. And what we were able, what we were forced to do is to really look at what's the basic needs of the park and what can we afford with local dollars. We're looking at, as we have with many of our other projects, having an annual contribution of about ten thousand dollars a year going into the program, and once we have sufficient funds, offsetting those with recreation impact fees to be able to complete the improvements that are listed here. The first improvement we would be looking at would be the dock renovation work and the additional floats. The second would be dealing with the parking lots. The west parking lot would have, by two minutes paving and restriping. The east lot would be stone sealed. That's a secondary lot. It does get some use, but most of the use that's occurring on it now are overnight parking for different ride services or an occasional derelict vessel that we end up with. But that parking lot also serves Ram Point customers that are using the coffee shop. So, there are activities. The walking trails at Marina Park are well utilized. The picnic tables are used, as well as the, you know, so it's a nice in-town park, but it does need some renovations at this point. Several years ago, we looked at charging people for day rates to be able to put their boats in, and while our parking lots during the summer are filled every weekend, when we put the parking requirements into place, no one used the facility, because what they were saying is that it's cheaper for us to drive down to the end in Arrogance and put in at Galilee for the money that it's going to cost us versus what it costs us to pay for fuel to get from there out to the breakwater. So it's not a case where we can generate revenues from the parking lots. I also think that if we improve the parking lots, it provides a better business base for the businesses that are operational there. So, it's not a major project, but it's a project that will address existing resources that need some maintenance at this time. The next project is the Town Beach. We're starting out with a picture of what no longer exists. But I did want you to see this. But I did want you to see this picture for a couple of reasons. One is this is a seating area that, that was destroyed with Hurricane Sandy. And what you can see is we were making out really well in advance of that storm. You can see the amount of sand that was there, the, and the burritos that were in place that buffered the, the, the front, front of our facility. All that was lost with the, the size of the storm. This was the result of, of Hurricane Sandy. As you can see, we lost another very large portion. When the council was there on the tour, we had the roof being replaced at that, that time. What our objective is at this point is to relocate the pavilion back approximately 300 to 500 feet. For us to be able to relocate the pavilion back, we're also going to have to construct a brand-new ISDS system. So the, at this, at this time, we've got two different grants, federal grants, that are available to us, plus the money that's held in the balance of the Beach Improvement Fund and future-year capital budget transfers. We're expecting that the relocation, which we would hope to accomplish in the 13, 14 year, would be at a cost of approximately $400,000. A&E work will have to be started on that to be able to figure out what the specific location will be and the location of the ISDS. The ISDS is shown at $150,000. The onsite wastewater system at 150 is because it's an advanced technology system. As an advanced technology system, it's not what you would put in for a three-month-a-year operation with a beach pavilion, but the town has little, has little choice. Could we go in for a special exception with Coastal and say we're only open for three months of the year? If we did that, what are we saying to the other facilities that are required to put these large facilities like Mary Carpenter's or Roy Carpenter's or the, on Sukkotash Road, the Wacamo Park? So we're wedded to the fact that we need to put an ISDS system that's advanced technology. We're wedded to the, to the necessity for the relocation. Relocating the pavilion will also create difficulties as far as us being able to continue to ensure handicapped accessibility to our beach. It means that we will most likely see additional requirements for us to put boardwalks in to get to the, to the beach, to the dune line itself. All of this needs to be looked at and Terry has got the project underway at this point. The engineering's been completed on the wastewater system. I don't think we've completed all of the engineering on the relocation at this point, but that will need to be started. This is the go project for the 13, 14 year. Anybody have any questioning? The other projects that are related there are really just reserve strengthening. When I say reserve strengthening, it means that what we're trying to do is to build funds up in the Capital Reserve Fund for unanticipated expenses that, that, that may come forward. Yes, Jim?
300 to 500 feet from the beach, that's a long haul. You know, I, I don't know if we're required by Coastal, you know, I know sea levels are rising, you know, all those reasonings, but...
Jim, I may have misspoken. I think we're closer to 200 to 220 feet that it's going to be.
I'm sorry, I thought you said 300 to 500. I was, but that, that's a monstrous distance to the water. I'd be looking at the new East Mattoonik Pavilion.
Recognize, however, that when we built that facility in the early 90s, that we had about 150 feet in front of us. So, and that's gone now. So, yeah, let me get Terry up to talk about the plans as, as she sees them at this point.
Just one thing I would point out with the relocation, it is, you're correct, Steve, that it's approximately 200 feet back from the existing position. That also puts it outside of the 100-year flood zone that the maps, that our town maps show now. So I think that that was one of the main reasons for pushing it back that distance and the fact that, that the, the rate of erosion is so high these past few years that it's, it's, it's really not that far back.
But again, the further we put it back, the more difficulty we have as far as the boardwalks that we're going to need to get to the dunes.
Can we keep the parking lots where they are? Can we keep at least the front parking lots there?
The parking lots should, should be undisturbed. I think the, that the potential location was to take it to where the second cell was, just to the, to the west of where the second cell is, in, the second cell of the parking lot is. And that would be where the facility would be located. We've got to look at how that also plays into the playground area because the playground also needs to be replaced. We had damage there with the storm as well, but that playground has, has exceeded its, its useful life. And that's also a component of, of our program.
What services do we offer out of the pavilion beside the facilities for men's and women's? Is there some food offered, vending machines, what else do we?
Yeah, there's, there's a concession that the council approves on an annual basis for minimal services. When we first purchased the beach property and we did the, the analysis on what we were going to build there, the consensus of the community was, and the direction of the community based on the meetings that were held with the council, was that they wanted a rural town beach. And what they meant by that is they didn't want any type of services that were going to be in competition with the businesses in that area. So what we built was a facility that did not have any type of kitchen facilities, but only restroom facilities. Right now, with the concession stand that's there, the man has a, a hot truck, one of those rolling boxes where they can do some cooking and most of it's, you know, cold stuff or coffees or sodas.
Does the state, the East Mattoonik State Beach, though, I believe they offer cooked food, burgers, hot dogs, the rest of it?
State of Rhode Island has full concession at East Mattoonik and that's been there since the first pavilion was constructed there. In fact, the, the last construction before this new one that was put in back in 1977 had a full kitchen. So it's nothing new there at, at East Mattoonik.
So are we considering a kitchen in the new facility, Steve?
We're not looking at a new facility at all.
We don't want to do that.
We're taking the existing building and we're going to use a crane and we're going to lift it and put it onto a new foundation, a new piling system.
And that's going to be on the other side of the playground? Is that what you were saying?
It'll be, it'll be north of the playground.
Yep.
On the west side of the second parking lot, the second cell.
Because generally, those concessions are good moneymakers at the beaches. I mean, it's...
Again, the, the, we, we did not have any support to put in concessions within that facility when it was constructed. At this point, you know, we have an open area which is used by the, by the staff and also provides for the storage on the concessionaire at night. But there are no kitchen facilities and none are anticipated at this point. I mean, if the council wants us to look at that, we could.
Absolutely.
But I would strongly suggest that you also, we would have to go back and do a review as to whether there was any conditions placed on the construction of that, that building. It's going back a while.
Because most people who go to the beach for the day, they eat right there. They, you know, they don't necessarily leave, go out and get lunch and come back.
I would point out that the concessionaire that we have a contract with now does bring a, a cart that he does cook, but it's, it's portable and it's a rolling cart and he's able to store it at night. But in fact, they do sell burgers, grinders. He's even got a very small, portable fry-o-lator.
Oh.
French fries. So he does have the, the ability and they, this past season, they did sell hot food and they stored the, the cart at night in the storage room at the, at the, at the pavilion. So because we have a very varied volume during the summertime, particularly on weekdays, you know, our beach isn't, isn't like a state beach that's, that's packed every day. It's sometimes not worth it for a concessionaire to enter into a contract with the town and not have any heavy business on those Monday through Friday days and then have to rely on just the weekends for their, for their main revenue. So it's, it's, it seems to be a good balance right now.
You do see, too, a lot of the people walking from the beach and getting the pizzas and those types of things that are available in the area and bringing them back in. So I'm not sure that we've had any demands for anything other than the concession services that, that have been available. But, I mean, we receive very limited funds from those, from that concession contract.
Now, the money that, for the, to relocate the pavilion, is that FEMA money? Did you, did you end up getting FEMA money?
Yeah, there's two different grants that are there that are shown. One's the Federal Stafford Act Hazard Mitigation and that, and then the second one is the Hazard Mitigation Grant. Both of those are the result of, of past storms. The federal government isn't interested in replacing what's lost. What they're interested in is putting their money into mitigation so that hopefully there won't be additional loss. They don't want to reconstruct those portions that we've lost. But they have provided us with the opportunity to use those funds to be able to preserve what we do have by relocating it. Andy, you've been directly involved with the grants as far as dealing with FEMA. Is there anything that we need to update council on with those?
I wouldn't necessarily say update, but these funds go back to the flooding in 2010, both grants. Originally, we're very fortunate on the studies that have been done on the beach over the years through the geology department at the University of Rhode Island with John Boothroyd and others who've taken measurements. And then the sand replenishment programs that the town has implemented over the years as well, all came into play in qualifying for some of the grant funds. So originally, the town, and after the 2010 flooding, we sustained significant erosion. We were initially looking at sand replenishment. As we went through the process, working with FEMA officials, we, it was very clear to us that that was a disfavored option in terms of investing dollars in a, in a rehabilitation project that could be lost fairly quickly in the next year with an additional storm that may come up the coast. So in that process, we started to look at mitigation, as the manager was mentioning, and we quickly learned that they were very interested in mitigation and the potential relocation of the pavilion, which qualified this project for an alternate project. So based on the damage estimates, the quantities that were calculated on the erosion from the shorefront, we were able to transfer those dollars into an alternate project. As the months passed and as the cumulative totals of damage for the State of Rhode Island were calculated, through REMA, FEMA comes through, the Rhode Island EMA, and presents a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program with a certain amount of dollars based on the overall damage calculated throughout all the communities in Rhode Island. We submitted a project for additional funds to support this particular Hazard Mitigation Project and fortunately, we're one of a few that qualified. So between those two particular funding sources, as well as other capital dollars, we feel confident that we have enough funds right now for a relocation, but really not for a complete reconstruction of a new facility. But a relocation on the existing property that would kind of fall in concert with some sand replenishment in and around, we really feel the existing location of the pavilion is most likely going to be turned into the new beachfront. At some point, it's covered with sand as we speak. You'll have to remove the existing tanks and other facilities that are in-ground at this point from the existing wastewater system. But the project overall, I think, for the dollars that we have available, will, will serve the town well for many years to come if we can at least get it back a couple of hundred feet.
Great.
Any breakdown of revenues at the town beach, the pre-buys by citizens of this town versus the, the day trippers? Is there a breakdown of revenues?
Yeah, the operating, you're asking about what we collect from people using the beach?
Yeah, I mean, both South Kings Town, the pre-buys, the ones that buy the passes versus the day trippers.
Yeah, I, I don't have that tonight available. I mean, the beach costs us around $100,000 a year to operate. We're bringing in about the same dollar amount from, from the beach. If, if you're looking for us to tell you how much comes from the beach pass itself or the day rates, I'd have to collect that. I don't know, Alan, do you have last year, sir?
I do, but it's not broken down. Maybe Terry has it.
I don't have it broken down with me, but we can certainly provide that. We do have that detail on the, on the passes.
That would be part of the operating budget that we have, but the beach just about breaks even as far as the revenue that comes into what we spend to operate it. What it doesn't pay for, though, is the capital costs that are necessary for the upkeep on the facilities there.
And just the day rate on weekends, what's the East Mattoonik cost versus our town beach for someone just coming in for the day?
It's, it's $10 a day for residents.
Carload of residents, okay.
Correct. I think the state was up higher than that, $14 or $15. I know they're, they're higher. We did increase the non-resident rate to $20, I believe, last year. I'd have to just confirm that, Jim, but we went up on just the non-resident rates for parking last year.
And we can only charge, because there was federal money used in the initial acquisition of the property, we can only charge twice the value of what we charge local residents to an out, an out-of-town person.
Okay.
So the 20 would be the max that we could go to with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We completed the addition to the Adult Day Services Program. Now what we're looking at is to begin improvements and upkeep, excuse me, on the senior center itself and the other two outbuildings. One's called the Annex and the other is called the Bond. The Bond's used for storage materials onsite. The, the Annex is what used to be the old senior center before we constructed the new facility. That facility now, which was built in 2000, is in its 13th year of operation, even though it doesn't show it. The, the, the programs that, that are operated there, we're seeing more and more of them. What we're looking at is the purchase of the accordion room divider, which will give us greater flexibility as far as being able to run multiple programs at the same time. We're also aware that we need to get ready for interior painting and carpet replacements in some of the areas over the next few years. In the Annex, dollars permitting, we're going to look at replacing the windows as well as the shingle and insulation because any space that you have will be used and once it starts to be used, people want to see improvements made to it. Right now, we've got activities that go on there as far as where crochet and knitting activities occur and storage. Food storage is still there with the cap agency for low and moderate income distribution for seniors. So there's a lot of different things that go on there. So the Annex is an important facility. Also, we need to update that, that so that it doesn't detract from the, from the aesthetics of that area and what really is, has become a town compound. So we're looking to spend about $160,000. We're showing budget transfers of about $10,000 a year through the pay-as-you-go and we'll be putting those monies into the reserve and using them as necessary. I think the only problem that we've really found with the, with the center itself has been the air conditioning systems. Terry, how many do we have on that roof?
Seven.
And we had failure on one, so we had to replace that. And these are very expensive units that we're going to have to look at in the future. What we're doing in the operating program is looking to put dollars available to be able to minimize what, what our exposure is if additional replacements are necessary. Do you want to talk to that issue for a minute?
Last year, we incurred expenses on actually one major, on one of the units, rooftop units for the HVAC system at the center. units for the HVAC system at the center. Bearing in mind that they are 12 years old, it's not unusual to see that type of repair and/or replacement needed. We also incurred an additional cost on a second unit. Both of those units happen to be on the side of the building that withstands the most severe weather. We've not had any issues since last year with the other units, however, in an abundance of caution. We'd like to be prepared to be able to repair and/or replace those units. And that's something that is always of an emergency nature, based on the fact that we require heat and air depending on the season, so it's not something we can avoid.
That's why we're showing, you know, a replacement reserve for the HVAC. We expect that there are going to be costs that will be incurred there as we go forward over the next several years. And the other items are really just building upkeep, and I think, you know, the program is very, very proud of the, the facility that they have and the upkeep that they, that they, they do. The senior transportation van, we're looking at a new van that's been purchased. We probably won't need another van. We'll start, in the 18, 19 year, we'll start putting money aside for the replacement. Those vans go about $100, $120,000. So we'll be looking in the seven or eight years out as far as the replacement on that unit. So that's why we're showing zero in the, in the budget program for, for funding. If there's no questions, I'd like to move to page 88. Page 88 is the pay-as-you-go portion of the recreation program budget.
Does it say 88?
Picture of the, the new bridge that was constructed with the work that was recently completed at the Village Green. The, on page 88 is a summary of the different programs for the first year funding, the 2013, 2014 year. As you can see, what we've tried to do is to group all of the playground upgrades in, in one, as one project, because the monies that come in for the, for the parks program come into the Recreation Capital Reserve Fund. We then do the projects and pay for those out of that reserve fund. So at this point, we're forecasting that between the various playground upgrades that need to be done, that we'll expend during the 13, 14 year, about $75,000. That number could be anything you want it to be. It could be $150,000, because it just depends on how elaborate the equipment is or how much is replaced. We also look at what the park utilization is. One thing we're very proud of in South Kingstown is the amount of utilization of the public parks and all of our recreation areas, but in particular, the playground areas. Curtis Corner, Steppingstone is used exclusively for the preschool program, but Tuckertown is the, the most extensively used park in town and is in serious need of replacement on some of the major elements of their, their program. When we look at the replacement on the playgrounds, first is the Curtis Corner Play Fields. $15,000 has been set aside to be able to do some rehab work on the major elements and replacements of some of the components. Steppingstone, as hopefully all council is aware, we operate a, a preschool program in the, the original Steppingstone School. The original Steppingstone was the first kindergarten in this country and was operated up through the, the 19, early 1980s as a part of the school program. It's now our pre-K program, and we have to have playground apparatus available for the participants in that program. The existing structure is over 15 years in age and is certainly showing the wear. At Tuckertown Park, again, the busiest park, we're looking at $30,000 being made available for the, the apparatus that's, that's there. One of the things that we've also done is to make sure that all of our parks, in conjunction with the insurance trust, are reviewed as far as the safety aspect of all of the equipment. We also have in South Kingstown a, a weekly inspection program on all of our equipment to ensure that if it's broke, it gets fixed, and if it can't be fixed, that it be taken out. This is an important thing in terms of dealing with, with child safety, because we have a lot of abuse that occurs with the equipment, so there has to be a, a very close eye on the equipment. We've had very little liability problems based on the, the program that's there. And it's not just a gee, I'll take a look at it. It's a case where there's a document that's produced weekly that demonstrates that somebody has reviewed the equipment. You can see the size of some of the equipment that we're looking at and why we're looking at $30,000 in replacement costs. One of the things that's not shown here is the spider web, which is a climbing apparatus that is also at, at Tuckertown in addition to, to a double set of swings. The Village Green, we're looking at a replacement on some of the equipment. The playground was the last item within the Village Green Upgrade Project that needs to be completed. In fact, if you've gone past the green of recent, you've seen that the streetlights have been installed and really dress up the, the location and provide better venue as far as people to be able to use it even in the dark hours. So this is the playground apparatus. This is, this is the elevation that it was set before we re-landscaped the, the park West Kingston Park, that playground was set up really for three-to-five-year-olds. There's also an area that's for the 6th and 12th. But that park, and it's hard to believe, is 20 years old at this point. Structures went in back in, I think, 1993. We're looking at this being a two-phased program where we've got funding last year or in the current year, as well as the $15,000 in the 13, 14 year, to do a complete overhaul on that, that playground. It's starting to show the wear on all of the equipment that's there. We've already talked about Marina Park with a transfer of $10,000. That, that's part of the pay-as-you-go portion of the program. The Beach Pavilion, we've spent enough time on that, I believe, unless there's questions. Tuckertown, one of the other things that needs to be addressed is over a three-year period, and we're in the, the second of the, of the three-year funding, is a $35,000 project to deal with the restrooms at Tuckertown. When the restrooms were first constructed, they certainly were a minimalist project. In fact, the original design on this was a beautiful facility, but when they bid the project out, much to the chagrin of the architect, the price came in at, I think, about $180,000. What ended up being built was the bare bones, which cost us considerably less. I don't recall the price, but we did not build what our architect thought was, was going to be necessary. The, the retrofit is to deal with providing a proper space for restroom facilities, as well as to be able to deal with potential vandalism problems. What we want to be able to do is to, to install proper fixture replacement, as well as automatic locking devices. Automatic locking is very important to us, because what it allows us to do is to keep our restrooms open later into the evening and then on a time clock, have them shut down. That way, for people that are using it in later hours, but we're not going to have somebody in there at 2:00 in the morning that is going to destroy something. So we're looking at that. We really need to update that facility, and that will be done in the 14, 15 year. When we look at equipment...
Steve, what is vandal-resistant wall treatment?
It's...
It's similar to what we have at the beach. It's a, it's a special material that is resistant to graffiti, that it can be washed off, it can be cleaned using a pretty heavy-duty chemical cleaner, and it won't damage the, the walls. But if you've ever been in the, in the restroom facility at, at the beach, I think it was two years ago, we replaced all of the, the stalls, put up new wallboard, and, and that covering is what that is. I, I don't have the technical term for it, but it's a, it's a special covering that allows us to keep it clean and graffiti-free.
Oh. I have a quick question. Is there any intention of maybe enlarging the building? I know there's, I don't know about the men's side, but I know there's only two stalls on the women's side, and when you have four soccer games going on, two baseball games going on, and the basketball courts and tennis courts being utilized, I, I just remember back in the day, there would always be lines out the door. I mean, with, with two stalls and the amount of people that utilize the facility, I, I would just think that there might be a little bit more space that might be conducive to the amount of usage that those fields receive.
I haven't heard the demand for that, but possibly Terry has.
Yeah, obviously, when, when that park is in full-blown use, with every field being used, the ball fields, the basketball courts, the tennis courts, and the soccer fields, that there, there is the potential for a wait to use, particularly the ladies' room, I'm sure. I think one of the things, that, that has not really come to the attention to the Recreation Commission, to the degree that there was the feeling that there was a necessity to expand the restrooms. However, we do have options, particularly during the high, high-volume times like summer or spring, where we could bring in portable restrooms to, to supplement that. Because while that is a concern, those, that timeframe is fairly limited when those parks are all in use, and particularly on weekends, obviously.
Steve, are the bathrooms at Marina Park open, you know, during the winter for people that walk?
I don't think we have heat in our bathrooms.
No, we, we turn the water off in the bathrooms because of the, the issue with frozen pipes, so it's, it's not open in the winter. We do have automatic locking mechanisms on those bathrooms, so they can remain open three seasons with no problem, but not during the winter.
Moving on, the department also needs the replacement on a couple of pieces of equipment. The first is the replacement on a pickup truck. We're looking to do funding of $27,000 for the replacement of that, that vehicle. And let me be clear, the money may be budgeted in the 13, 14 year. If the truck isn't in need of replacement, it won't be replaced. The money will stay within the reserve until the truck is proper, is, is ready for, for, for being put, put offline. The same holds true with the replacement. Actually, this is Terry's new vehicle. She's going to be tooling around town in this, because we really can't afford to give her a vehicle at this time. But the, this is a replacement on the multi-use vehicle that we've had for, for several years now. It was, in fact, it's the, this is the replacement of the second one since the bike path operation. This is used extensively with the bike path, or it's used in the beach program. Again, we'll, we'll replace it at the time that we need to replace it, once we feel that we've fully expensed out the existing unit. The, the third item is an item that is in a two-year funding cycle. We're in the second of those two years. We're looking at the replacement of a, of a lawn tractor with loader, and that vehicle cost is estimated at $30,000. But we need to get those dollars reserved at this time. There's also the, the fourth item is the replacement of a equipment trailer. Estimated cost is about $7,000 on that, that unit. We've talked about the Senior Services Program. If there's any questions, we can go over those. Again, major issues that we're looking at is the replacement of wallpaper and carpeting, if necessary, interior wall repairs, as well as the accordion divider, and setting up proper reserve dollars to accommodate problems with the HVAC.
Steve?
Yes?
Is there some North Kingstown use of the senior center? I'm confused. It seems like one year there is, one year not, but...
On the senior center?
Yeah.
The, the use of the senior center is really pretty much between Narragansett and South Kingstown. Third-party use of the facility is occurring. We are seeing more people in from other communities, but that's with all of our programs, because really, our senior center is becoming a hub for the region. While I'm drinking, why don't you expand on that?
Yes, in fact, we do have seniors from around the region. We get Charlestown, Exeter, North Kingstown, Coventry, East Greenwich, who, who do utilize the center, whether it's for activities or, or the meal site. What's very typical with, with senior centers too, is that other centers, like, there is a North Kingstown Senior Center, there's East Greenwich, they also may get seniors from our community. We have seniors who kind of hop to different centers for, for different reasons, for activities or, and/or a change in scenery, or they're visiting friends. So we, we do get that overlap of different communities coming into our center. Primarily, though, we service Narragansett and South Kingstown.
What's the breakdown of the numbers from both communities in terms of council revenues?
How much are the other communities paying? The way we assess Narragansett is based on the meals that, we, we review how many meals are served on an annual basis. We look at the population, where it resides, and with the meals program, we allocate the cost as if South Kingstown and Narragansett residents are 100%. And even though we know that we're getting people in from the other communities, then we, we, on a prorated basis, ask them for a contribution. Contribution, the initial budget reviews that we've done on the school, on, on the seniors' program for next year, we're seeing a great deal more use, both with the Adult Day Services, with non-town residents, and we're seeing an inability to collect on those, from those communities. Because there's, with like, the Adult Day Services, Jim, you may have one person coming from Exeter, and based on what the requirements are as far as they're, what we're able to charge them, it's well below what our expense cost will be. At the center itself, we are getting contributions only from Narragansett. With Adult Day, we're still getting contributions from Narragansett and North Kingstown. But we are dealing with, I think it's, four or five individuals that come from Exeter, Richmond, and Charleston, that are using the Adult Day Services, where those communities are not contributing to, to, to what those, those program costs are. And what that does is it really jacks the price up for the three participating communities. I mean, the biggest problem right now is that we haven't seen any increases in what the state share is to be able to fund that proper, those programs properly. I mean, the, the state reimbursement rate at this point, I think, is what, $58?
It's $42.98 a day.
And we've got to have, with a certified program, a, a full staff, which includes, you know, nurse, social workers, activities directors. It's not something that you can cut corners on and be able to meet the requirements for certification. So our cost per service is considerably higher than what collection rates are, so the cost to the community continues to, to escalate. But that's an operating program issue more than it would be the cap. We're going to move now to the last element, which is the fair share development fees, and that starts on page 77 within the doc, document. The fair share development fees address two different areas. One is for educational facilities, and the second is for... One is for educational facilities, and the second is for open space conservation, parks and recreation lands. When we talk about development fees, what we're attempting to do is to charge a fee at the time of a building issuance with collection, no later than when the certificate of occupancy is issued, where what we're doing is collecting dollars for what the new population moving into those homes are going to need in terms of services or infrastructure. The dollars that we collect on impact fees cannot be used for any other purpose than for capital facilities for expansion of service areas. So when we look at education fees, all of our recreation-related fair share development fees are being used to pay debt service associated with the Broad Rock Middle School construction. The open space conservation fees that are used are for any of our park expansions that occur. But again, they cannot go to operations. They can't offset operating facilities. They can't be used to renovate existing space. They can only be used for new space development or expanded space where core facilities currently exist. And we've been very, very true to those definitions to ensure that if there were claims brought against the town, that we would be able to prove that they were used for the specific purposes in which they were directed. The methodology for computing education-related fair share fees was last revised in the 2010, 2011 year. Prior to that time, we would go through an exhaustive review of how many new houses were being constructed, how many children lived in each of those units, and what the predictive was of new space that would have to be created. We stopped doing that because as student enrollment decreased, there was not a need for us to look at anywhere within the 10-year horizon to construct new school facilities. Yet there still was the necessity for us to continue to pay the bond costs associated with the construction of the Broad Rock School. On page 80, we show you what the cost is to construct the school building. It cost us approximately, with the bond interest calculated, $18.5 million. What we assumed was that we would set the bar at trying to collect 50% of the cost associated with the school from constructions that occurred subsequent to 1990. Impact fees in South Kingstown go back all the way to 1986. That's when we first started collecting impact fees in the community. But what we looked at here was to say, why do we use 1990 as a year? Because when the school opened in 2001, it would have been children that had been born from '90 forward, that would have been at the 10 to 11-years-old to be able to occupy a middle school building at the sixth-grade level. When we look at Broad Rock, I just want to give somebody a little bit of background on that. We saw expansions in the student population between 1986 and 1999, from 2,942 students up to 4,383 students. That was a 49% increase in our enrollment. And during that time, it required us to spend considerable dollars on school expansions. In 1998, bond issue was put forward by the community and approved by the voters to be able to build a new middle school. That bond authorization was $10 million. The construction began in 1999, and it's ironic that the 1999 year was the first year that we started to see a flattening of the student enrollment, and in fact, actually a decrease, the first year that we saw a decrease in enrollment. And since that 2001 year, when the school opened, we've had a steady decline in enrollments. The population declines have gone down to, now we're at a population of 3,387 students as of October 1 of the 2012 year. So with the declining enrollments, there isn't going to be a need for any new schools, and any renovations of existing schools wouldn't qualify for impact fees because it wasn't expanding the floor space, but only redeveloping or modernizing older existing space. So when we looked at the last construction of the Broad Rock School, we assumed that we would be able to look at recovering about $6.3 million in cost plus bond interest, was $9.2 million. But then we had to consider that we'd get the money back from the state in terms of the 30%, it was at 30% at that time reimbursement. So essentially, what we were looking at is if we were going to recover 50% of the cost, we would need to generate $6.4 million in impact fees over the term of the bond. We also were concerned that there was a great deal of criticism of impact fees through the building community. So we said, well, we don't want to be held to the exact dollar amount. What we'll do is we'll discount by another 25% what we would charge on impact fees, so that if anybody wanted to challenge us, they would find that our numbers were justifiable. And even if they were going to argue about 10%, we would have already discounted 25%. So essentially, what we're looking for is about a $4.8 million reimbursement potential from the fair share fees. To set the fair share fees for the education, we looked at the seating capacity of the middle school, and that seating capacity was set at about 600 students. We assumed that approximately 50% of that 600 students would reside in housing constructed prior to 1990. Therefore, for expanded population purposes, there would be 300 additional students. Because we have a 15-year period, not the 20 years, but 15 years before, we would assume renovation costs would be necessary, you would multiply the 15 years times 300 students for 4,500 seat activities over that period of time. Since a middle school would be three grades, you would not have 4,500 unique students, you'd have 45 divided by three because they were there for three years, or 1,500 students. You take the 1,500 students and you divide that into the $4.8 million, you work out to the $3,244. That's the same impact fee that's been in place for the last two years. We're not recommending any change in that going forward. What we also do with fair share fees is we have a discounted rate for two bedrooms or less, or for multi-household units. This would be where there's less bedrooms, because what we wanted to do is to relate the building impact fee to the potential for children residing in the unit. So for two bedrooms or less, it's 50% discounted to $1,622, or at 25% of the value where there's a multi-unit accessory apartment-type units that may be constructed. So that's how we set the impact fee. When we look at, what have we collected in impact fees? The collection of the impact fees is shown on page 82, and you can see that we've collected 2.7 million. We're still, there's $2 million that we haven't collected, and over the life of those bonds, we won't collect anywhere close to that $2 million. Right now, impact fees are generating about $70,000 to $90,000 a year. With development increasing, I think we're going to see increases in the income. Last year, for the 11, 12 year, we were at $115,000. I haven't looked at the year-to-dates yet for the 12, 13 year. Have you got a mail?
Yes, $56,000 on the schools, so we're projecting about $110,000 there, of $74,000 on the recreation, and estimate of around $135,000.
Your mic on?
It is now. Okay. On the school impact fees, we've collected around $56,000 with a projection of around $110,000. On the recreation fees through December 31st, we had collected $74,000 with a projection of around $135,000 for the year.
So we're continuing to move forward, but, you know, when you look back some of the years, if you go back to the 2003, 2004 year, our collection was over $500,000. So, you know, we've seen the drop-off in the construction, and also, when subdivisions are approved for plus-55 housing, there's exemptions provided from the education fees because you're not anticipating that you're going to have children residing in those units. You're still collecting a recreation fee, but you're not collecting a education fee. Recreation fair share fees, if there's no questions on the education ones. Recreation fair share fees, we set up a two-tier system for the fees. Based on the zoning ordinance requirements, we, on an annual basis, are required to look at what the cost of fair share fees would be for recreational purposes. I think the easiest way to look at it is on the chart on page 83. The ordinance suggests that the town look at what the cost is per acre for acquisition purposes, and that we need 10.5 acres of land for every new thousand people that come into the community. We look at what the federal census shows us as far as the number of persons per unit. The number of persons per unit is now at 2.6. For two bedrooms or less, it's at 1.95. So the two bedrooms or less would be some of your senior housing or condominiums. So what you do is you divide the cost of 10.5 acres by the 2.6, and you come up with a unit price of $2,867. If it's for the two bedrooms or less, it's at $2,150. And these are the same fees that were established and have been in place for the last couple of years. So we're not projecting any increase on that at this time. We showed you the values last night as far as the amount of dollars that are in the fair share fees. Al, do you have those numbers as to how much we've got available at this point?
As of June 30, 2012, we have $1,432,000 in recreation fees and $110,000 in school impact fees. We're projecting for the end of the 2013 that recreation will have about $1,445,000, and the schools will be up to around $150,000.
But recognize that the fund balances that are there are held just as a capital reserve, are holding the dollars, so that we can use those monies on each of the projects that we've explained to you over the last two nights. We've got recreation impact fees that are going into those projects. So if the projects do go to construction, we will be drawing down from that fund. We're not going to be drawing down much more because of the value, there's very little left in the education fair shares balance. That's why we're down to $70,000 as a paydown on debt service in the 12, 13 year. So as we go forward, we'll continue to see, I think, good numbers coming in on the recreation fair share because they're broader. It's for more of the construction that occurs in the community, and you're going to continue to see limitations as far as the fair share on education. If there's no questions, let me move on. One of the things that we did when we dealt with the fair share fees is we wanted to provide an exemption to ensure that affordable housing was able to be constructed in the community. And to do that, what we had to do is to come up with a formula. So what we looked at is taking 80% of the median family income, which is shown at $60,480, assuming that if a house was being constructed, it would have a 4% 30-year mortgage associated with it, and if that were the case, 30% of that median, of the 80% of median family income would be available for housing purposes. Housing purposes would then be worth $18,144. If you take the monthly housing expenses, it would mean that they would have $1,512 to spend on the mortgage, as well as the property tax and the hazard and mortgage insurances that would be necessary. So what I then do is to back into, if all of those components occur, what would be the maximum price of an affordable unit? And you could have an affordable unit at $220,000 with the person earning $60,480 with the 4% mortgage. Because the cost would be $1,050 for the mortgage. So that's how we arrive at it. Now, if somebody came forward and said, well, I've got a house that costs less than $220,000 that I'm going to build, I don't want to pay the impact fee, we would, one, certify that it was going to sell for less than the $220,000. Then we would require them to file a certificate demand that would require the unit to stay as an affordable unit for the next 30 years. That way, count toward the affordable housing needs of the community, because we can't count units as affordable unless they have a 30-year guaranteed period of being affordable. It's highly unlikely that somebody would come forward and put that type of a restriction on a full-market valued house, because if they were to sell it, they would only get the equity out of it for the differential as to what an affordable unit would sell for at the time that they sold the unit. As long as the spread is very close, I don't think it would be a good economic move for somebody to save $3,000 to encumber what the equity increases could be in the future, even if you're going 10 years out. Because whatever equity increases that occurred would have to be measured against what the increased value was for an affordable unit. So if the affordable unit at that time was only $240,000, they would see very little that they would be able to get out of their ownership. So the exemptions there, we've had a couple of uses with it, but the uses that have occurred have been where it's been an in-law apartment that's been constructed, and they're willing to provide the assurances, the recordings that are necessary for showing that the unit will stay as an affordable unit. I think, what have we dealt with, been three or four of them?
I don't know what I asked.
Yeah. So, but this is there as a safety valve, and it's also there to avoid criticism that says that we're making housing unaffordable by having the impact fee requirement at the time that the units are constructed. The last element that's also required by the zoning ordinance is dealing with in-lu fee requirements for affordable housing. And essentially, the town has a system which is unenforceable at this point unless the state law has changed. We talked about this with the council, we talked about affordable housing late last year, where there was an East Greenwich case where the judge decided that there was no enabling authority to require the payment of in-lu fees. The way the ordinance is set up right now, the way we've got the ordinance set up right now is that affordable units allow for 20% expansion of the number of units that can be constructed with a subdivision. If it's over, how many units, Ben, 10?
More than five.
More than five units. So if you had 10 units, they would be required to build 12 units, of which two units would be affordable. Now, the in-lu fee only comes into place if the planning board allows it. The planning board's priority is that if you're going to build a 10-flat subdivision, you're going to be required to put 12 units, and two are going to be affordable units. you're going to be required to put 12 units and two are going to be affordable units. If you're able to prove to the planning board that you can't put those two units within the subdivision itself, the planning board would then give you, potentially would give you authorization not to build it within the subdivision, but to have to put those two units someplace else in the community. You'd have to buy land, build those affordable units, and they'd have to be dedicated for 30 years. Or you could buy existing housing stock, renovate it, and dedicate it as affordable units. The last would be that if you couldn't find how you could do any of those different things, you would then be able to provide an extraction fee and pay to the town the difference between what an average house unit sells in the community and what an affordable unit would sell for. So, based on the reports that we get through the Warren Group, the average sale price in South Kingston is $280,000. The calcs from the prior page show that it's $220,000 for the maximum price on an affordable unit. So it means that the extraction fee, if it were, if the enabling legislation was put into place, would be $60,000 to that developer per unit. But again, it would only be as a last resort and I doubt very much that the planning board would find that a developer was, one, unable to put the units within their subdivision; two, unable to buy additional units that could be renovated and dedicated as affordable units for 30 years; or, three, could not buy additional land to be able to put the affordable units within close proximity. That's an awful lot of proof that would have to come before the in-lu would even come into place. I've continued to put it into the budget document because it's required by the zoning ordinance. However, if the planning board did get to this point, they wouldn't have this as a tool available to them. So they would have to stay within the first three options. And again, I don't think we've seen the planning board move away from the requirement that the units be constructed on-site on any of the subdivisions yet, have we?
There was one subdivision, Stone Soup Farm, that's just due to be recorded soon, that was going to renovate, I believe, two units in Kingston in lieu of, but you know, we haven't gotten to the point of the in-lu fee at all. But you know, it's certainly a useful calculation to go through still, assuming the legislature fixes the issue. And the calculation Steve went through earlier that establishes the value of affordable units at the 80% median income, that's very useful to have as a planning tool because it's an illustration specific to South Kingston of what those values are. So when people ask us, you know, what does an affordable unit, what the upper limit is at 80% AMI, we have the value in place, which is the same basic calculation that Rhode Island Housing uses. So that is, actually, over the last few years, been, I found that to be a very useful chart to show to a prospective developer or somebody interested in what those values might be because they vary from community to community based on, you know, variety of factors. You know, income, interest rates, local tax burden, what have you, so.
This is a snapshot. This isn't, it's not that you're adopting the schedule that I've got up on the board. What we would do if we had a developer in, we would then go back to Rhode Island Housing, determine whether or not there had been any changes in the income levels that were being most recently reported. And we would then be able to do a recalc within the formula, which is, you know, easy to recalculate. And it may change. It may change the 120 to 121 or down to 118. But most likely, it just gives us an ability to be able to say, here's state documentation for housing purposes, this is how we calculate it. It takes into consideration the most recent tax rate and what the most recent taxes would be on the unit. Again, somebody could quibble that the 4% interest rate is too high, that they could borrow at 3.2%. It also looks at how much of a down payment that would be necessary, all of those different things that can be taken into consideration by using this type of an approach. I've also given, over the past several years, the, where Rhode Island Housing guidelines are. Rhode Island Housing guidelines looks at 120%. Somehow the chart broke off the 120 and it shows 20. But it should be 120% of median family income. So what they do is they look at it and they say that for affordable unit, when they're looking at it, they're not looking at the $75,600, which is median family income in South Kingston. They're jacking that up to $90,720 as 120% of the average median, or the median family income. And so what that does is it puts their price of units all the way up to about $335,000. We think that's totally unrealistic. And our ordinance, through the zoning ordinance, now requires us to use the 80% factor.
I don't really, I can't really understand what the benefit to the developer would be to do the off-site units. I mean, I can understand that they can increase by 20% on-site and they can build more units than the zoning ordinance might ordinarily allow. But how does the developer benefit from the off-site? I mean, it just seems like it's too much.
Carol, I think it's a case where the way the land that they've got to develop, the way they've situated, in the instant case where you say it's a 10-lot subdivision, they really couldn't fit in the two units is what they would be arguing.
Right.
And it may be that they wouldn't have the land area or they would feel that it was an inappropriate development scheme that if they were to try to put 12 into the space that they had 10. Again, each of them is going to be scrutinized by the planning board, where the planning board is going to say, "Well, no, we think you can change the lines and we think you can fit it in there." Or, I guess in the case that Vin just referenced, one that the planning board said that this is a better development plan for us to let you do it off-site.
So it benefits us to increase our affordable housing, but it doesn't necessarily benefit the developer?
It's not intended to benefit the developer. It's intended that if we're putting 10 houses in, the objective is to, for all communities in Rhode Island to get a 10% of all housing stock being affordable units. So if you don't have the inclusionary zoning that has the requirement for an expansion of, if you're going to be, if somebody's going to be able to build 10 houses and not have to put any additional units in, our percentage of affordable units is going to continue to decline rather than go up. So the 20% gives you an objective of trying to get to a point where, where we're at about, what, 5.5 at this point?
5.16 because of the 2010 census numbers for the number of year-round homes.
You know, because if you build 100 houses and you don't build any affordable units, then that 100 houses is counted toward the gross number of units in town. So if we've got a stagnant number of affordable units, our percentage is going to drop. That's what the inclusionary zoning is attempting to address, is to try to keep ahead of that 5.16 number.
Steve, how many of these projects have we initiated with the 20%? How many developers have kept it within their project, their own?
There's really only been a handful because we adopted the ordinance, I believe, in 2006. And that was coincident with the downturn. And a couple of examples I could give you that have been, the Glenett-Saugatucket, which is under construction over at North Road towards Saugatucket, is, I believe, 12 units and two of which are to be affordable, and that's nearly built out. There was also one called Heritage Estates down off, down in Oskapog that was built by a family and they had two affordable units built for family members. And that one turned out very nicely, actually. And then we have the Stone Soup Farm, so, and High Tide Landing down to, which is just due to begin construction in terms of the infrastructure down off in East Mattoonik. That 40 lots is being built there. So I think there's seven that are affordable and that that would be built as well, so.
Older history back to '06, '07.
No, I think there was just, you know, not a lot happening with that. And there's not a depth of experience really across the state with the inclusionary model. I think East Providence had a version of that. We were one of the first communities in the state to adopt that. But there have been quite a number of other communities that did as part of their state mandated affordable housing production plan, so.
It was in October of 2007 that we adopted it, so we've just got five years of experience.
Haven't there been a number of projects, maybe not in South Kingston, where they have not been able to sell the affordable units?
Well, I think-
Just dropped right through them?
Well, that has been an issue particularly under state law. Steve has the calculation for the 120% of area median. And that yields a unit price of 335, which could be considered affordable under the state definition. And that was based on amendments to the law, I think that were done in 2006. Those units have proved, as I understand it, very difficult to market because they're so close to the actual market conditions. That Spinnaker Village in Westerly, I think, has experienced some of those difficulties. And the 80% of median, at least at this point, would have a spread from the market to, so a buyer would say, "Well, I can, you know, I'm getting less equity potential, but I'm also getting a good deal." So it's, they could judge it as worth their while. I think the ones that are very close to market, and market and affordable have come closer together with, you know, the downturn in value. So, yeah, no question, there's been a challenging circumstance to market these units, so.
I did know, going back to the case of off-site, if a developer is saying, you know, using the 10-home model to off-site, if he would be looking at too much of a discount for the 10 homes to offset what he's putting into those two off-site homes. Suppose we don't have any market information.
I mean, those off-site units could also be rental units. So that, you know, there could be a rehab of an existing home in the town that was rehabilitated and then, you know, get the, the rates for rental would be governed by a formula as well. But, you know, it's, I think it's a pretty decent rental amount for South Kingston. HUD does the calculation based on number of bedrooms. It's a lot of numbers and, you know, it's a bit of a learning curve as we go forward towards this. But it's, it was, you know, it kind of trickled down from the state and it's, it has forced communities to think about means to promote affordability in their housing markets and some balance so they're just not building on the upper end. At least there's some, you know, thought process to provide a balanced demographic in a community, so. It's a tough thing. It's, I'm sure we're going to be wrestling with it more as time goes on, so.
I still don't get this, though, this off-site thing. I don't know why I'm having such a problem with it. But, so would you withhold approval of the primary, like, say you want to build 10 homes and you can only build 10 there and you're going to do this off-site, two units? Would you withhold approval on the 10 if they didn't agree to do the two? Is that, is that how far it goes?
What happens is this, is when a developer comes forward with a, the 10 lot is a good, you know, from an easy, easy-
Yeah, right.
From a planner's math point of view, they, we do what they call a yield plan is required. So based on the existing zoning conditions, a developer would develop a plan that would show how many units could yield on the property. So if under existing zoning, you could yield 10 lots, there would be a requirement for a second yield plan to be put forth that would show the two additional units. The planning board would take a look at the two in, you know, discussions with the developer and determine if the 12 lots could fit reasonably and not have some, you know, crazy configuration or just be overburdened to the property or create environmental issues or what have you. If that was, on the planning board's part, agreed to that that was a non-tenable circumstance, at that point, the off-site option could be considered, but not prior to. And it's at the discretion and the direction of the planning board. It's not a decision the developer makes. I mean, they can provide an argument as to why off-site might be a better circumstance. And, you know, we've had some of those conversations. But, you know, the developer is given an ability to depart from the zoning. You know, he could create the two extra lots on a small lot basis. But, you know, it has to make sense at the end of the day. We don't want a non-quality development to go forward. So, and that's part of the progression, you know, it could be rehab off-site, new units off-site. And then, as Steve mentioned, the fee would be the last option. And we've never gotten to that point. And I think in large measure, well, we can't under the law as it stands or the court ruling, but that was an option we didn't want to get to either, you know, that would be, you know, the last-
Would you withhold approval of the 10 units if the builder said he wouldn't put the two off-site units?
Well, our ordinance would require that he, that, you know, that that, our inclusionary zoning ordinance requires that the affordability aspect be addressed. So I guess yes.
So builders would walk away? I mean, if they couldn't manage the two off-site?
Well, I think the builders are adjusting to the realities of the ordinances that exist across the state, not just in South Kingston, you know.
It just seems awfully cumbersome to have to go off-site to-
Well, I mean, that option, you know, the onsite option is the preferred option.
Satisfy the ordinance. I mean, it just seems a lot.
Well, you know, builders are adaptable. And they are, I mean, you know, we-
That's why we don't have enough affordable housing, right? They're not so adaptable.
Well, I think, you know, a lot of the building occurred during the boom years was aimed at a higher end of the market. And, you know, there wasn't a lot of, you know, balance in what was being produced as opposed to what the market produced over a period of time. In a typical town, we'd have housing for various groups versus, you know, just the highest fruit on the tree that's the most profitable.
Thank you.
Any other questions as far as the fees? If not, that concludes the review of the capital improvement program exclusive of the review that'll occur next week on the, with the school committee on the schools. I want to remind the council that the capital improvement program will need to be adopted. It's scheduled for public hearing for the second council meeting, which is the January 28th, I believe it is, for final adoption at that time. So if there's questions or additional information that council needs prior to making those final determinations, please get the request to us and we'll get the information out as soon as possible.
Thank you, Steve. Any last-minute questions here at the table or other matters of interest and concern? And I'm just going to open the mic for any public comment, any last-minute comments from staff. Lastly, I would just like to make the statement that we have a lot to be thankful for in South Kingston after listening to the two presentations. First of all, I think we need to be thankful for the staff that we have. Looking at tonight's presentation with the open space and the bike path and all the senior services and parks and recreation, truly is a blessing to be here in South Kingston. So before I adjourn, I just want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Steve and Alan and all the town staff. With that said, are we ready to adjourn? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.